Good morning and welcome to the May meeting of the Finance Efficiency Economy and Sustainability Subcommittee. We will go ahead and start the meeting today, as we always do, with the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilman Noakowski, would you please lead us in the pledge?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and just so everyone knows, we also have Councilman Valenzuela on the phone, is that correct? Perfect. All right, so we've provided the minutes of the April meeting, have been provided to the members of the Subcommittee. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I have a motion to approve the April 16 minutes of the meeting.
Okay, motion to approve, and do I have a second?
I have a second.
All right, perfect. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Aye.
All right, motion passes unanimously. All right, we will move on to item three, findings and recommendations regarding the printer and copier reduction initiative.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We came last month with some information on this, and now our chief financial officer and our chief procurement officer are here to describe this, which we think has opportunities for some significant savings for the city. So, Mr. Young.
Thank you, Ed. As Ed mentioned, we were here last month, we had some preliminary recommendations from the contractor. We've worked through those, and as suggested, there are some possible savings for the city here that we think are significant. And we have a recommendation at the end to how we can move this program forward. With that, I'm going to turn it over to James to walk us through the slides.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Subcommittee. We're here today to share with you the findings of the recommendation performed by a consultant we brought in to look at the city's copier and multifunction device, as well as printer environment, and to make any assessments and recommendations for better managing that environment across all city departments. Let's see, just a quick overview of the project itself. This was generated as a recommendation from the Finance Efficiency and Economy and Sustainability Subcommittee. We reviewed the printer infrastructure, the copier infrastructure across the city departments, and we're comparing them to best practices across the country for similar-sized organizations. And then the result of the analysis was to make recommendations to move towards a more efficient environment. So, to date, the project has included the conduction of an RFP through the Finance Procurement Division. We conducted that in the fall of 2013. City Council authorized the resulting contract in January. The contractor submitted a draft report in April. The staff of Finance and the Information Technology Services Department have provided feedback. We anticipate the final report to be provided to us in June. However, we have the full contents of the report, and we're ready to make the recommendation to move forward with the program. So, overall, there were some findings that the city could make some improvements with regards to our printer and our copier environment, but they were all some positives. So, just to kind of start out with some of the positives that the consultant noted, they saw that our copiers and our MFDs, so these are our large copying systems that are also perform scanning and printing and other functions, they noted that our units were very well-equipped, so they had a lot of functionality, a lot of document processing features, that make them more valuable and make them more useful for more applications, so that we don't have to buy as many devices. We can use fewer larger devices instead of lots of smaller, more expensive devices. They also indicated that our copiers and multifunction devices were established spatially pretty well, for the most part. Most departments, the copiers and multifunction devices were placed where they could be used by a larger number of employees. So, instead of having locations where everybody has to walk to the same side of the building to go get their printer and copiers, that actually encourages them to buy more individual units. So, by spacing them throughout a floor or what have you, it actually encourages more efficient usage. And they said that our spacing was pretty good. They also noted a positive trend of movement from printers to copiers. In general, the cost per printed document for a printer is about 40% on average higher than what it would be to print that same document to a copier multifunction device. And so, they saw more movement away from printing to a printer and towards printing to a copier, and that was good. They encouraged us to continue to do that and to purchase less printers over time. And lastly, they pointed out that our pricing under the office supplies contract for paper was some of the best pricing that they'd seen in the country. Our price per page is .35 cents per page, so that's...
Are we still getting the paper from Dunder Mifflin, or have we...
That's our office supplies contract.
Okay.
But they did recommend that we consolidate and leverage that pricing more by including more document printing activities from like our central print office and so forth, to try to leverage that pricing to get better pricing perhaps, or at least to maintain it. But they said our price per page was very good.
Just one question for you. As part of this, are we looking at kind of the behavior of our employees and whether we need to be printing as, I mean, we have, you know, so many tablets and things like that now. Is that another thing that we've looked at, or if that's an initiative kind of citywide?
Chairman, members of the Subcommittee, absolutely. Part of the analysis done by the consultant was actually to perform a survey of the various departments and to ask the employees what they thought and what they knew about print management, print economies, print efficiencies, and so forth. And based on their responses, they noted a couple of areas where we could improve the staff's knowledge in these, with regard to efficient use of printers, efficient use of printer configurations. So, many of them realized that printing to a copier and MFD was cheaper than printing to a printer, so they felt that that wasn't something that we needed to reinforce. They made a strong recommendation that we configure all of our devices such that they operate most efficiently on the front end. So, instead of just installing a printer or a copier or multifunction device and leaving it with its original configurations, through our program and through educating the city staff, to make sure that they're initially configured to print to monochrome or black and white as the default setting, and print to duplex, to dual-sided, so that your first setting is your most efficient setting. And if you want to change that setting to something less efficient, it's a considerate process, it's something that you think about doing before you act.
James, did they, did you do anything with having people reducing printing? I think that was your question also, was not printing at all is the cheapest way to
Absolutely.
Not use paper and ink. So, do they have any strategies for us about reducing the amount of printing that people might do overall?
Yeah, they, the consultant noted that one of the conditions of our current contract was to establish minimum quantities per device, so that the contractor knew that they were going to earn at least a certain amount per device. But that because we were moving away from printing hard copies and we were more making electronic documents and electronic copies, that we shouldn't have those types of minimum quantity guarantees. A part of the education or training component that we would require in the new contractor would include when we should print and when we should not print. That'll be a component of the training, and that would be a required provision of the new solicitation, new contract that they're recommending for us.
Okay.
So, beyond the positive findings, we also noted a recommendation for the establishment of a managed print services program, simply to create a new contract and create a new vehicle for purchasing devices, and their consideration was not sufficient. We needed to have a way to manage the city's overall use of these devices to make sure that it was strategically established and strategically pursued, to create milestones throughout the life of the next contract and to make sure that the departments were meeting those milestones. So, managing the activities of the departments and the city staff, as well as managing the activities of the contractor. The recommendation was to establish the program in the Information Technology Services Department with contract activity to be backed up and supported by the Finance Department. The recommendation also included that the MPS program, the Managed Print Services Program, include the establishment of a stakeholder committee with representatives of all the departments, so that as print-related policies are created and promulgated throughout the organization, that all the departments were represented. So, some of the general recommendations, on the high end, they recommended that we create a phase-end plan for changing out our devices. When they looked at all of the copiers and printers throughout the organization, they noted that in general, we have a fairly young fleet. So, the number of copier printers, or copier MFDs that we could replace right now would be about 21%. So, from their experience, an organization of our size, there would be a few more older devices that you could phase out immediately, but ours is right about 21%. So, they've recommended a series of milestones over the next few years where we should be swapping out devices, some of them for more capacity, but many of them for less capacity, because we're using less of the individual device's capacity, so we should purchase less capable devices, cheaper devices, cheaper to maintain.
And then, sorry, a question on that too. I mean, to the extent that people have their own individual printer, and I'm sure we have that around the city, would we just kind of lose those by attrition and have a general policy that people shouldn't, unless there's some exceptional circumstances, people shouldn't have their own personal printer on their desk or in their office space?
Chairman, guys, members of the Subcommittee, that was absolutely one of the recommendations from the consultant, that we get away from what they call non-network printers. So, those would be printers that are directly connected to your desktop. They want all the printers connected to the network, so they can see all the printers and they can see the printing activity that's done at the individual units. And if a unit is being underutilized, they can move it or remove it from the fleet. So, absolutely, they're recommending that we discontinue individual printers to a given desktop. There will be circumstances, well, that'll be necessary, but to have policy around that so that it is fairly rare and unique that you do so. They're also recommending settings for printers and copiers such that if you're printing confidential material, you can go up to the copier multifunction device, put in your passcode, and then it'll print all of your confidential material without you worrying about it staying out there available to the rest of your colleagues. They're also recommending that we consolidate in the new contract printers and copiers and multifunction device under a single contract. Right now, we have a single contract for copiers and multifunction device, and then we have separate contracts for our printers. We purchased the printers under our PCs and servers contracts, but they're not purchased under our current leasing contract, our cost-per-copy lease arrangement with Arizona Office Technologies. They're recommending that we consolidate them so that we can take advantage of the greater volume, and as we move away from printers to copiers, we'll still have strategic pricing, because it'll all be with the same company. They're also recommending that we include dedicated full-time factory-trained service technicians in the new contract. Some of the service provisions, they felt were not as clear and objective as they would recommend in the current contract, so that we have start and stop locations for all of the trained technicians, that they show up at a given department every Wednesday, and they do a proactive sweep of their devices, that we have regular reports of device utilization, that they do preventative maintenance, things like this, so that they're not reacting to trouble tickets all the time, but they're also getting in front of this maintenance before it occurs, to diminish the overall cost of maintaining the units.
James, those would be employees of the contractor, not the city.
Those would be employees of the contractor, absolutely. They're also recommending rightsizing a specific portion of the copier multifunction device fleet. They actually listed out specific units that we should be downsizing or upsizing, because they are either repeatedly overprinting their volume targets, or they're repeatedly underprinting their volume targets. So, they're targeting specific devices to be changed out. They're also recommending that we include contract provisions that allow for synchronized or coterminous lease conclusion dates. So, right now, every time a new copier multifunction device is brought into our fleet, it has its own term for the lease, so it's a 60-month term. So, every time you bring in a new device, that's a new term that you have to monitor. So, the life of the current contract has a long shadow. And what they're recommending is that you have a coterminous end to all of those individual leases, so that when you transition to the next contractor, you won't have as much remaining obligation from the current contractor. They're also recommending that we establish standardized printer specifications, so that we're buying as much as possible the same units. That will cut down on the maintenance costs for those units, because you won't have to have the variety of skill sets to manage lots of different types of units, whereas if you're managing a handful of manufacturers, then you can have just the number of technicians and skill sets for those manufacturers as compared to lots of different models. And they're also recommending that we discontinue volume guarantees. As we move more towards electronic documents and less towards print documents, they're recommending that even though volume guarantees could be a good contractual incentive to get the best pricing, because we're changing the paradigm in terms of how we create documents, they're saying it's just not a good practice to have at all. So, they're saying that in the next contract, we shouldn't have any volume guarantees compared to what we have now. So, moving on, the report included an analysis of our current fleet of devices, as well as their associated costs. So, all total, we have 688 copier and multifunction devices that cost approximately 2.3 million per year. These are lease payments, and they're based on the current price per page for each individual device. We came up with an effective cost per impression, so that's the amount that we pay minus the amount of expense per unit. Okay. We have 1,448 printers in our fleet, and they cost to operate approximately $649,000 per year. That does not include the cost of the device itself, it's just the operations of the device. Because they were purchased upfront, they were not leased, we have realized the cost of the devices separately.
When you say operating cost, so that's like toner?
Yes, sir.
And that is paper, or no, that's separated out, so that's just toner?
Not paper, that's just, yes, maintenance and repair.
And repair, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And then paper, we run through approximately 68 million pages per year at a cost of $468,000. That's not all the paper that's purchased by the city, that's the majority of the paper purchased by the city under the office supply contract. We do have separate contracts for other printing activities. One of the recommendations is that we try to leverage all of that activity into the new contract. So, specifically with copiers and multifunction devices, challenges and opportunities. The current effective cost per impression, as we talked about previously, for monochrome or black and white printing is 6.19 cents. The current cost per impression for color copies is 8.58% cents per page. Those are higher than national standards, and we should be experiencing fairly, we should be experiencing lower price per impression, and we'll be targeting those in the next solicitation, based on national standards as recommended by the consultant. Also, we're recommending not including volume-based minimums or guarantees, as we discussed previously. But all total, based on achieving national standard pricing and reducing the number of our copiers and multifunction device, spacing them and diverting more of the printing from printers to copiers and multifunction device, we could be realizing on the magnitude of approximately 700,000 in additional savings per year. That's citywide. So, opportunities for printers. The current effective cost per impression for printers is 1.7 cents per page. That's actually better than the national standard of 1.8 cents per page. But again, that does not include the cost of the printers. We're purchasing these printers outright, so this is not an annualized expense. We also recommend the gradual elimination, as you mentioned earlier, getting away from having dedicated printers to a given desktop and going with network printers only, and through time diminishing the number of network printers to the amount that you absolutely need, otherwise doing all of your printing off of copiers and multifunction devices. If the recommendations of the report are implemented, the city could realize approximately $200,000 in annual savings. And for paper, because our pricing is very strong, they recommend keep doing what we're doing. But they do recommend that we leverage the volume and find other opportunities where we're buying paper outside of our office supplies contract, to try to divert that spend under our office supplies contract whenever possible. So, in conclusion, staff recommends the acceptance of the recommendations set forth by the consultant, the establishment of a managed print services program to be led by the Information Technology Services Department, be backed up by the Finance Department. And I'm glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments from my colleagues?
Well, this statement, it's good. How would it not be good? I mean, realistically, this is the kind of thing we should be doing. You spearheaded this, so you deserve all the kudos for prompting the city to get into this in the first place, but there's no downside to what, anything you're saying that I could hear. And that is not a typical response for me either, when these plans are presented, so little insider humor here, people laughing, so I appreciate it.
All right, so we're ready for a vote then? No, I'm just kidding.
Why are you kidding? Oh, wait, are we not, is this just an action or a discussion?
No.
This is, yeah, we are having a vote.
I just wanted to make sure, you know, didn't want you to change your mind, Jim. Not that you do, you're not someone who does that, but anything else?
So, I'm in transients, is there anything else you wanted to tell me?
Not at all, not at all, no. Councilman Noakowski.
You know, I think it's really important that we educate our employees too. I think that's a key, because 40% cheaper in using a copier than your own printer in your office, that's a lot of money that we can just save, looking at the, what was it, 1,400 printers that we have? So, I think that's, it's a good way to educate our employees too, to start using the copiers more than just the printers. Sometimes it's convenient, but if you can walk a couple more feet, we can save a lot more money. So, that's a real good point that they brought out in the study. And I like about having our own techs that are trained and having the same types of printers. So, if something simple breaks, I mean, we can actually just interchange parts and all that, so that's a real good recommendation. So, with that, I'd like to make a motion if there's anybody else that has comments.
I'm only going to do this because you goaded me into it. I just have one question. Are we going to spend all the savings increasing employee travel and membership in organizations?
I knew that was coming.
You basically asked.
I did, I did.
No, just a little humor left over from yesterday's budget hearing. We all voted no, so Michael sees the humor in this too. No, I will second the motion, without further ado.
Great, we have a motion and a second. I did have just a couple other things, real quick. One, to follow up on what Councilman Waring said, yeah, what's the downside? There is no downside that I can see, which then leads me, you know, no good deed goes unpunished. What other things are there like this in the city that we ought to be looking at that, on this clearly, we're paying too much money right now? And again, I don't mean to criticize by saying it's good, it's been identified, let's address, but what other things are there that basically we could be spending less money, and it doesn't affect city services in any way? Am I, yes?
Can I ask a question to tag along to that? Because there is someone who comes to meetings all the time, so Pat Vint, if you're out there watching, he often criticizes, you know, the payment things that we have to, the contracts that we have to sign off on, and he said, are you guys really expert in each one of these things? And the answer, I'll be frank, is no. Obviously, you know, how are we supposed to know what bulk supplies of paper cost? And so, I mean, at some point, we are relying on staff. So, Bill's question is an excellent one, and if there's not an immediate answer today, that's fine. We are left a little bit to your devices, unless we happen to work in a business or know something specific. You know, I've known some stuff just because of previous life or business or whatever. I think we all have that, but we're talking really over a billion dollars in our budget. So, we are really asking, and that's a very serious question, and we really want really a sharp answer on where can we cut stuff? It's not impacting services, we're talking about providing the same services to constituents, doing it for less money, and using the money to hire police officers or whatever it is we do with it. So, it is a pressing one, this is quite a bit of money for something that just, and we would really have no way to know this unless you somehow buy paper in bulk, you deal with a lot of copies, I mean, you just wouldn't, so, as a council person. But you guys do, so we are relying on you to come back with an answer. Now, I'm sorry to step on your question, but...
Mr. Chairman, Vice Mayor, so I think that's, those are good questions. One thing that just comes to mind is what we've done this year with vehicles. So, if you think about it a lot, how do you get to this situation? Well, it's more convenient to have a printer on your desk than to walk the two feet to the other, right? And if you're not paying attention over time, that sort of creeps out, and more and more people want that convenience, and then you got to bring it back to center, which is, we're going to inconvenience people a little bit to save a lot of money. In terms of downside, that may be the one downside we get, is just the, oh, I used to not have to walk to that next place. I think we can all live with that. Vehicles is something that we've done that with as well. So, over time, the desire would be to, it's easier for me to just have a vehicle dedicated to my specific need in my department. And so, we saw some creep of vehicles, and so, in the last year, last six months, we really tightened back down on vehicles, and I gave the command that there's going to be no such thing as an underused vehicle in the city anymore. They're either going to be fully used, or we're not going to have them. And so, that's along the same line as that. And we'll take a look and see if there are other things to come back, but it just struck me, we probably should come and do a report to you on what's happening with vehicles to this committee. We haven't done that. We've really shrunk the fleet, looking at it differently, and so, that's something we can come and give a report on. But we'll think of whether there are other places like this. We always need to be asking that question, what else is there? I think that's a great question.
Also, Mr. Chairman, I would just want to add, I think our e-procurement system will start to highlight those areas where the spend could be consolidated, get some more economies of scale and scope. I think that will be helpful once we get that up.
Yeah, I think that's a great point. I mean, based upon what I'm hearing here, we just have a bunch of separate contracts on these individual printers? Is that what we have right now?
It's crazy. Chairman, members of the Subcommittee, we have individual financial leases on the devices themselves, but it's all up under our cost-per-copy contract with the current contractor.
James, how many contracts do we have where we buy, that we buy printers from?
We, but...
Because you said that was separate from the copier.
About a half dozen of the contracts that we purchase, desktops, servers, other types of IT infrastructure, we also purchase the printers from.
And you're saying that should be consolidated?
Yeah, one of the recommendations or one of the observations that the consultants noted, that they see across the country, and they suspect being true here, is that when you purchase printers, you typically don't make a strategic decision. You make a decision based on, I have money that's left over at the end of the year, or I didn't need to spend as much on this, so I'm going to go buy some extra printers. And they recommended that we not have that type of reactionary buying when it comes to printers within a fleet of printers, that our printers purchasing should be strategic in nature, and it should be based on a plan with set milestones and not this kind of afterthought buying, so.
Councilman Noakowski?
You know, I was just walking into different buildings, and you have different temperatures, right? I'm not sure if, I know on the 11th floor, after eight o'clock or so, everything turns off, you have to hit a special button to turn on the lights and all that. I'm not sure if all of our buildings are suited that way, or even the AC units, I walk into some of the libraries or rec centers or so, and it's pretty chilly in there. So, I was just wondering if that might be something we can look into in the future, some kind of centralized units or so.
Well, and I would just follow up on that. I mean, I completely agree, and I know, you know, one of the reasons that I supported the creation of a chief sustainability officer for the city of Phoenix is to have someone who can focus on the energy efficiency of our buildings. There's millions of dollars that we can save, and so, I know it's a significant spend for that person, but that person, I think, will pay for their salary many times over, and that because of those types of issues and many more. So, and I guess one thing I would add to, I talked about yesterday, and I think some of my colleagues as well said, hey, we're starting on, we're starting on next year's budget. So, and I guess one thing I would add to, I talked about yesterday, and I think some of my colleagues as well said, hey, we're starting on, we're starting on next year's budget now. And so this item and others, I mean, we're talking maybe million dollars plus. I think we ought to do everything we can to expedite this so that these savings can start to hit immediately and impact next year's budget and the following year's budget, so.
Well, the tax and fee increase was $11 million. If you can stack up a few things like this over the next year, maybe you can stop increasing those fees and get rid of the, you know. Definitely, your point is well taken. It doesn't take that many victories like this to get rid of the need for that.
Yep, absolutely.
Big stake stuff as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, any other comments or questions? All right, we have a motion, has been seconded. All in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Yes.
I earned that. All opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously. Great work. Thank you very much. Next item, item four is excess city-owned property update.
All right.
Another issue we talked about a little bit yesterday at the council, so very timely.
Correct. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the subcommittee. We have been tasked with coming back periodically and letting you know how it is that we are progressing with our fixed asset sales, our land sales. I do think things are progressing pretty well. We do have a closing coming up in June, and we have a number of other properties that are already being marketed. And we're preparing a request for council action to bring more properties to market as well. With us is Scott Sumner with the Community and Economic Development Department, Steve Corny with Jones Lang LaSalle, and Jamie Spear with the Real Estate Section in the Finance Department. First of all, one of the key areas that we really have to deal with, and we are dealing with it as best we can, and moving through a huge volume of data on our fixed asset data management systems. Just a quick reminder that our fixed asset data management system is an SAP, and it was prepared specifically or developed specifically to manage fixed assets in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. And it's not necessarily the type of system you would utilize to identify excess property, et cetera. So what we're doing is making sure that we are scrubbing that data and consolidating specific lines in those assets. You know, one line in the data management system could simply be for the purchase of the property. Additional lines could be for improvements to the property. We're trying to consolidate that and make sure that we have a document that is completely clean and ready to go.
If I could just interject here, I think it's important because I know I've heard the frustration of council and the public about our land and our way of accounting for or displaying land. And so what you're seeing here is a shift that Neil and his staff is making from viewing land as just an asset that we count like desks and cars and those things to actually items that have a potential for possible income to the city. And so that's what has been frustrating about the delay is they're trying to make that shift from just purely it's an asset that we're always going to have to it's an asset that we may want to at some time be able to market and dispose of. And so it's a culture shift for finance, for the city generally, and that's what this committee has really pushed us to.
And I think the other part of that work is making sure that we're segregating the right of way and any easements. We're synced up with the county assessor, standardized naming conventions. I know that the subcommittee was very concerned about that. And put us in a position where we continue to be able to identify properties that could be labeled as excess as we go forward. I know everybody wants to map our properties on a geographical information system, and that interface testing is scheduled to begin in July. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Steve, and he can tell us about marketing efforts and what's going on overall.
Right. Well, we've been, the city staff's given us the first tranche of properties to evaluate, assess, help price, and get out into the market. So we're well down the road and involved in that. So essentially what we're doing is we're looking at these properties, all the data that the city already has in terms of appraisals, surveys, we're going out to look at the sites. And we're doing an opinion of value on them, make sure we're synced up with what the city believes the value of those properties are. And then we're going out, generally we're going out unpriced to the marketplace. We're offering them for sale and letting the market either prove us right or wrong. So that so far has been generating values in line with appraisals and our opinions of value. So we're out there marketing both in a general sense, listing them on all the commercial databases, and then we're doing targeted marketing, going right to developers, owners, investors that happen to invest or own that type of property. So it's, it's working quite well. So the first property that we were asked to help market was 2222 West Greenway. So that was the first one to go out on the market a couple of months ago. So we are now, we fielded offers, negotiated, and we're now in escrow. And that property, the due diligence period ends on Friday, and then that property is scheduled to close June 11th, so that's, that's coming up fairly quickly. So that one went quite well. Northside, this is one in the second tranche, I guess, that came out right after.
Sure. So, so we sold something. I think that's terrific.
That is good.
But all right, so, so do we pay, obviously, buying and selling houses and so forth? I think probably everybody up here has done that. So do we pay realtors? Do we pay fees? I mean.
Yes.
So we pay it just like.
Great analogy.
At home, I think there's a percentage of it, 9% or something, you can kind of expect. I think that's right.
Well, the concept is correct, so it's paid just like a home, you know, paid out of escrow to the brokers. In this case, Jones Lang LaSalle, my firm, gets a fee. Now, it's basically the way the fees set up, it's kind of different at tranches for the value of the property. But for under $5 million properties, there's a 4% fee, so, yeah. Homes have higher percentage fees, obviously smaller values.
Fair enough. I didn't know. I just obviously know.
No, good guess, but you're correct on the concept.
But you have an incentive to get as much for the property as possible.
Absolutely, so our incentive is to get you guys.
I was just more curious, so off the top, so when we see a purchase price, is that subtracting the fees or is that what we're actually getting?
The purchase price is the gross purchase price, so you'll have some, obviously some commissions, and you'll have some what I'll call other closing costs in terms of title work and other minimal fees.
For the city manager, so what gets reported to us? Do we get the net? Obviously, for big properties, I mean, that could be a lot of money, you know.
So Neil, we've talked about the $1.8 million for 2222. Is that net or gross?
That is gross, and what we'll record in our transactions would be the gross revenue minus the expenditures, and we can report out the ultimate net amount that the city received on a per-property basis.
And then several of us have talked about your budget situation and this. So what actually happens to this 1.8 million minus the fees?
1.7.
So 1.7 million.
Minus.
What happens to that 1.7 million? Goes in the general fund or is it special? I guess I've never asked that specific question.
Yeah, in this case, it's property by property, and so in this case.
In this particular case, this property would go into the general fund. I'm certain that the Budget and Research Department is aware that these are one-time funds and would not be building them into future estimates or things like that, and would likely use them for one-time sources, but this is a general fund.
What would be a case of a property that wouldn't go in the general fund and why?
The properties along the light rail line, for example. Typically, the Federal Transit Administration has equity in those properties. So any proceeds relative to them are going to have to essentially be shared with the FTA on a pro-rata basis, depending on the initial funding and who participated.
Again, if we see a sale price or something like that, at some point you guys are going to, because we have partners, and I was going to get to that question, so we kind of just jumped ahead. So we have partners on some properties around the city, so you will subtract out, because obviously if it's like a $2 million swing or even $100,000 swing, that matters to our budgets pretty dramatically, pretty quickly. So, so you'll let us know what the actual to-the-city dollar amount is, because that's really the only one, just like when people look at their paycheck. You know, they know to subtract out the taxes, and they really can tell you probably what the net is, but they don't probably can't tell you the gross. That's kind of the way I am, and I think that's what most people are at this point, so. So you are going to let us know though, to make it clear, because we did have some issues yesterday about, you know, the numbers and everything. I just want to make sure we get a clear number at some point.
The chairman, vice mayor, several questions here. So the one, so on this 2222 property specifically, the food tax reduction plan specifically said we would have a million and a half dollars of property sales that would help offset the reduction from 2% to 1%. So the first million and a half of this goes to the general fund to specifically fill that, which is good news. That's good news. The balance of that goes to the general fund and is going for these one-time technology expenses that we talked about yesterday. And that will be the same in the future as we budget that. In terms of what other properties, so aviation has a significant amount of property. That would not be able to be a general fund because it's purchased with aviation. The Water Services Department has property that would not generally necessarily be general fund. Those are probably the two biggest. We have a lot of property we've purchased with community development block grants, individual redevelopment or blight removal. That, those funds would have to repay the CDBG, and what happens? They get recycled back into the CDBG program. So those are some of the situations where we would sell property, which is important because it gets it on to the tax roll, which is.
Reduces our expenses.
Reduces our expenses, but it's not necessarily a general fund asset.
I just wanted to see what the distinction was. I suspected there would be various permutations.
Yeah, absolutely.
Can I ask a question about one of my favorites, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
Okay, so the golf courses, so.
Oh, wait, no.
I'm not saying we all agree on this issue. So Palo Verde will say for, you know, our subcommittee, I guess our other subcommittee I'm on, a month or so ago, we had a report saying it's not viable as a golf course. Let's assume, for argument's sake, I'm in a small minority now, on this issue. But, I mean, golf courses, like, that's a nine-hole course, I think. I'm guessing that's probably like 150 acres. I don't expect you guys to know off the top of your head.
Thank you.
But I, but, but you're talking probably on average, couple hundred grand. Developers are paying for land. I can tell you, I had somebody in my office for a comparable-sized piece of property. It's way above that. I mean, this could be, you know, a lot of money, 10 million. I was thinking maybe three or four. It could be more like $10 million or something like that. Could we sell one of the courses? And if we could, where would the money go? I think we now know what the fees would roughly be by doing the math. Is that something we could do? If not, why not?
The chairman, vice mayor, so it really goes on a course-by-course basis, based on what deed restrictions are. So for example, Agila, or Agula is, I think.
I never pronounce it right either.
I don't, how should I pronounce it?
Oh, you got it.
Agila? Okay, Agila, is deed restricted because it came through a federal government grant of land, maybe the Bureau of Land Management or something. So, and Papago would be the same situation, so there would be underlying conditions.
Those two are doing much better, I might add. You know, they could obviously be money-making enterprises for us.
I don't, I don't know the underlying conditions of Encanto or Palo Verde, but theoretically, properties, if they don't have any restrictions, could be sold and the funds could go to the general fund. It just depends on those.
Because those are the bigger pieces of property, and obviously, particularly in that case, they're one of the biggest drains on the ticket. So, you know, it's costing us money to hold it. There are people who are interested in it. I know, because at least one group's already come in. Now, they want to redevelop it as a golf course too, but, you know, to make a nicer course and everything. It's just something to think about, but, you know, I would assume those six pieces of property are six, six of the bigger blocks that we have, right? I would think an 18-hole course would be about 200-something acres. So a nine-hole course, I'm guessing, would be probably still more than half. There's something to think about, but I mean, you're talking about millions of dollars now that could be used for something else. All right, sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Does Chair have a comment?
Please.
Yeah, I just, I have to speak up while I respectfully disagree with my colleague, Vice Chair. On the, on, you know, Palo Verde obviously is more than just a golf course. Yes, it is a golf course. It's an important golf course, a city golf course, but it's also green space in the middle of a neighborhood, and it's been there for a long time. I, you know, I would just say that it's already been studied, yes. It looks like, you know, the viability is in question, but we've also, we also have options. You know, we have options to market it better. You know, we, there's, there are two golf courses in District 5, two city-owned courses in District 5, as you say. One is Palo Verde, the other is Maryvale. We're working very hard, along with city staff, to save not only those two courses, but all of the golf courses, including Iqula, which I believe is the lowest-use course, if I'm not mistaken. But all of our city-owned courses, as far as I'm concerned, need to be preserved for golf, you know, for, for the residents of Phoenix. In Maryvale, we are, you know, there's an RFP process that is out. We're losing more than $200,000 a year. And it looks like we potentially are going to have a public-private partnership there, something similar to what you see with Arizona State University and Papago. And except this here in Maryvale will most likely be with Grand Canyon University, and that'll be a pretty large cost in the city of Phoenix. And hopefully, if we're not able to find a public-private partnership for Palo Verde, we can, we can certainly market it better. We can certainly find ways to make it more viable, and I'm hoping to go that route. As far as the group, this group that is out there meeting with some of my colleagues, which is certainly, you know, certainly at every, you know, at their discretion, both my colleagues and any potential developers or, you know, or interest. I, I just, I would like to state at this point, I still have not been contacted. And while it happens to be in District 5, that kind of surprises me that this particular group has not contacted my office. But, but if they're interested in speaking with me, as always, I have an open-door policy. They can certainly call me. You know, call my cell phone, call my office, or just come out, especially if it's time to come and see me, and I can meet them anywhere. But, but again, I just wanted to, again, respectfully disagree with Vice Chair, I have a lot of, you know, a lot of respect for Jim and. But, you know, I said this all along, I think our city-owned courses are absolutely vital. They're important. They are, you know, it's part of, you know, for me, it's part of growing up. You know, I would have never learned to golf had it not been for affordable city-owned courses, so I just wanted to sum up that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, and I think this discussion here highlights the fact that sometimes this isn't as easy as it seems, and I certainly recognize that. You know, having said all that, we are in a unique time when these sales can really make a difference for our bottom line. So did you have further presentation that you'd like to make?
Actually, we were going to just step through each of the properties, Mr. Chairman, and then we're going to talk about some CED RFPs that are out.
Okay.
You know, I'll run through it real quickly. Northside of Greenway at Ninth Street, seven acres. It's being marketed right now. We've had good response so far, mostly from multifamily and senior housing developers. This is, this is an old fire station on a, on a small lot, quarter of an acre, a little over a quarter of an acre, which still has city personnel and items in it. It's not available for us to market until August, but that's one of the next properties that'll come on board. This is 19th Avenue. It's a small 7,000-square foot. I'll call it a remnant. And it's been on the market a couple of weeks, and we haven't had a lot of interest yet. It's going to be a tough one, obviously, because of parking and because it's really too small to build anything significant on. It's one of those, and I just.
Like a little drive-through coffee place.
Yeah, or, or smaller, but the city does have a number of these that we're going to see coming through, so it's not going to be the first time that you'll see a remnant up on the board. Again, another one.
Can I ask you this question? So is it sellable?
You know, it can be, you know, everything's sellable at the right price, I think. It takes, you know, many of these do have a property immediately adjacent. They're the most logical buyers. You know, there's some, they don't pay the highest prices for it.
Use it for parking or something?
Use it for parking, something like that. This is a good example to your question, so this is 1120. This is also, this is even smaller remnant. There are two buildings, one on each side. Now, they're both. There are two buildings, uh, one on each side. Now, they're both vacant, and one's for sale. So it's really, on these small remnants, it's really a timing issue. You know, there's somebody who's doing something.
They want to expand.
They want to expand. Somebody buys the building next door and says, hey, if I can get that for parking, you know, I can increase the value of my building. The remnants are more dependent on their very small geography.
And I don't, I don't think this would be for you guys. Do we know how much it costs to keep each of these properties going? I mean, I assume we have to send somebody out to check on it at some point, if there's a building there, or it's got trees, or water it, or whatever. Is there any total budget to take care of all this stuff that we own?
I, I can tell you, for just the light rail remnant parcels, there's about twenty-one sites that we manage, and we spend roughly a thousand dollars a month just maintaining, having staff monitor those.
Kind of like an HOI hires a management company, just send people out to check on it.
And we do get frequent calls.
But that's for all twenty-one, not a thousand.
Correct. So, so the remnant parcels that we are selling may not yield high revenue, but they will minimize the cost.
It saves our expenses. That was where I was going with that, so thank you. Because that helps. I mean, it's not, in this case, not a lot of money, but.
Yeah, and I'd like to, I'd like to follow up on that. So how about citywide?
And we're talking, what, four thousand properties or something, I think you said last time?
Well, real estate does not manage all citywide properties as far as maintaining. It's only as the department's request. Uh, light rail is obviously, uh, everybody has their eye on it. So we manage those. A lot of the properties may not be as well-maintained. It's just as people call in or NSD notifies us that there's an issue, so.
Also, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. So insurance, um, you talked about a thousand dollars a month, just to send people out to sort of check on it. I assume we have to have it insured.
Well, that would also.
And if there's a transient or something who gets hurt, or something happens, I assume we have to have insurance for that. And I assume that stuff probably happens, given the number of properties we're talking about.
The, the thousand dollars also includes costs to clean up the garbage, uh, weeds. We do have all the properties posted with no trespassing signs and authority to arrest on those.
I hope all our properties are in.